You got nine o'clock?
Yeah.
Man, oh, I got one minute to tell you're wrong. All right. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here. Appreciate your attendance. The date is Tuesday, April 12th, 2022. This is a regular place and time for meeting of the Kings County Board of Supervisors. Uh, we continue to deal with COVID-19. So whether you're joining us by WebEx on the computer or by teleconferencing platform, we thank you for your participation, whether you're in quarters, online, or on the phone. Anyone wishing to address the board under unscheduled can please use the raise your hand feature if you're online, or get our attention if you're on the teleconferencing, or if you filled out speakers cards. We'll get to you as we take them in the order that they were received. Uh, each vote today will be verbal or voice vote so that the members of the public can hear how each board member has voted uh, after the motion and the second. So we, again, thank you for being here. Thank you for kind of a blustery day messed up my hair a little bit, but we'll continue to work through those issues. In order to establish quorum, I'm going to ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Here.
Richard Valley.
Here.
Doug Verboon.
Here.
Craig Peterson.
Here.
Richard Fagundes.
Let the record show, all members are present. We have established quorum. We will be able to conduct business. Uh, please rise as we invite Pastor Pablo Rivera, First United Methodist Church to deliver the invocation this morning and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Good morning, sir. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having me here. Let us pray. Merciful and loving God, you are the author of life and the source of truth. Help us live lives of generosity and integrity that are rooted in your love, and we thank you today for all your blessings. We ask today that you bless the board of supervisors abundantly, and we continue to, that they continue to seek your wisdom, guidance, courage, and strength. Be with them in their deliberation and help them to be wise in the decisions they make for the good of all those who have placed their trust and confidence. Giving God to the board insight to lead with integrity, that their decisions may reflect what is right and good. Help them to make decisions that are for the good of all and guard them from blind self-interest. Dear Lord, grant to all of us the humility to always seek your will in all that we do and say. All glory to you, to you, Lord, now and always, forever and ever. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Good job. And now join me as we honor America by reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, and just as one.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is unscheduled appearances. Any person may directly address the board at this time on any item on the agenda or any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of this board. Two minutes are allowed for each item. Um, and we do have a, uh, yellow folder when you get within 30 seconds and then the red folder means that your time has expired. So with that, does the clerk have a record of anyone that would like to address the board at this time?
Yes, I do not have any written correspondence, but I do have the first speaker card is Jamie Bell.
Good morning. Thank you for being here.
I come to give some information on the Dominion voting machines and other voting machines, but mainly Dominion. They, uh, there's a report here from Colorado, from Mesa County, Colorado. That's one of the few counties where the machines have been looked into. And, uh, they have definitely found manipulation of the votes. And, um, also uh, they can be changed through cyber. They can be algorithm put in ahead of time. They can be loaded up ahead of time and the local people, the clerks don't know anything about what's happening. And, um, also I think that, um, we should have an elected official in charge of our voting and maybe an elections board also. So that was, and on, on this report, there are going to be preliminary injunctions started in some states against using the machines, probably this week. Arizona is supposed to be the first. So, oh, and then, uh, on the 2020 election, it shows that, uh, 3,598 votes were flipped from Trump to Biden in Kings County through cyber. And if anybody can get a cyber person and prove that that didn't happen, uh, it's all on frank speech. Uh, Lynn Dell has a reward if somebody proves that that didn't come from the 2020 election.
All right. Thank you. Loopy, you want to meet up with Loopy too, right there? He's our elections. Yeah, the clerk will take it.
With, uh, Richard?
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you. And then Loopy, raise your hand. Yeah, Loopy will take care of you if you have any questions and he'll even give you a tour. Okay. Okay. Thanks.
The next speaker is Rebecca Bell.
Good morning. Good morning.
Long time no see again. I guess this is a weekly thing.
Yeah.
Um, now, I understand that the laws of the way they are right now is that the unscheduled appearances that we're just voicing our opinions and no actions can be taken. I'm not sure how things got changed, how long it's been going on, if it's just the, if it's just our counties, the cities, the state or national, if it was a national change, but honestly, it needs to go back to where when people were to voice their opinions. It's not just only our opinions. It's more that we need help with whatever we're doing. I mean, last week you had a gentleman come up and says, hey, people are vandalizing the canal. I can't take care of my property. And in order for actions to be taken, it needs to be amended and there has to be several steps. So, I mean, I probably, I don't know if I can even urge you guys to do anything, but we just want to be heard more than, I mean, we want to have actions done when we bring something up to you, but not have to go through. I mean, I don't know if that is to help you have a preview of what's about to come, or if you guys need to assign somebody to do, to be a community liaison to where when things are said that, um, I'll do the research and we'll address it instead of if it's not amended, we can't take any actions. So that's why we're up here and telling you things and we want, you know, something done instead of, I mean, some people have feel that I came there, um, a month ago and no actions have been taken, but should have people been told we can't do any actions because it is not amended and in order for that. So it just maybe make it a little bit clearer or make some changes. I mean, I used to hate change, but this is one of the things that needs to be changed. So, uh, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else?
That's all the speaker cards that I have.
And I see no hands raised on WebEx. And I see no one else in the audience that would like to address the board under unscheduled. Seeing no one come forward, we'll move on to the next item, which are, is the reporting out a closed session, uh, held on April 1st and April 5th. And Mr. Hill, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your board took no reportable actions on either of those dates.
Very good. Thank you. The next item is the approval of the minutes and there are two sets of minutes in this week's agenda. The minutes from the April 1st meeting and the minutes from the April 5th meeting and as everyone had a chance to review those minutes.
It was presented.
Moved by Verboon, seconded by Fagundes, additional discussion. Hearing or seeing none, uh, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley, Doug Verboon. Craig Peterson.
Hi.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Let the record show, the minutes stand approved unanimously by members present. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the consent calendar and all items under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be acted by one motion. The request of any board member, any item may be removed and made part of the regular agenda. Are there any items that, uh, anyone like to be pulled or discussed?
There's no question or comments. I'll move it presented.
Second. Uh, moved by Verboon, seconded by Valley, additional discussion. Hearing or seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboon. Craig Peterson.
Hi.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Let the record show, the consent calendar stands approved. Five in favor. Thank you very much. Moving to regular agenda items. First item comes, uh, from the trifecta of, uh, Human Services District Attorney and Probation Department and, uh, regarding, uh, Resolution Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month.
Yes. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I am here in conjunction with our probation department, Chief Kelly Vernon, as well as our Health and Human Service, our Human Services Agency Director Sonia Bugey and Assistant Monica Connor to ask this board to do as you've done for many years is declare April of this year, Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month. Every child has a right to thrive, learn, and grow in their full potential. By investing in children, we are investing in our future. There is never an excuse for abuse. National Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month shines light on, on child abuse and encourages everyone to commit to taking action to protect the youth in our community with support from the community. Parents can increase their capacity to provide safe and healthy homes for their children. As residents of Kings County, this is our commitment and our goal, and we should take every step we can to bring awareness to that. Since 1983 and President Ronald Reagan declared this month to be Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month. And since then, April has been a time to acknowledge the importance of families and communities working together and all the services we provide to build families, communities, and to make children healthier, independent, and wholesome, to live healthy lives. Adopting this resolution, designating this month Child Prevention, Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month in Kings County will be that opportunity for this board to honor local service providers, bring awareness, and show support for thriving children and their families. Nearly 377,000 reports of child maltreatment were made to Child Protective Services throughout California in 2021. The Kings County received over 1,900 reports in that same year, and the entire community feels the effects of child abuse and neglect. As a community, we need to create ways to get involved in a meaningful way. To that end, we have Julia Patino here, as well as Phil Espenshade. Julia will share with you some of the activities going on this month that we can all participate in to shed light upon this growing and increasing task that we have before us.
Good morning, Chairman of the Board, Board of Supervisors. Julie Patino, District Attorney's Office. I'm speaking on behalf of CAPC today. Um, just to let you know some of the events that we are doing in the community, you should be seeing, uh, blue ribbons placed at the Civic again this year in recognition of Child Abuse Awareness Month. Um, King's Partnership is doing a media campaign, so I hope you see us on social media and see all the events that we're doing in the community as well. Um, I'm sure you guys have noticed the pinwheel gardens already. Uh, I know that there's some at Human Services. Uh, probation has theirs up already. We'll be out in Avonel and Kettleman City, uh, hopefully this week um, to get those pinwheel gardens up. And I believe Corcoran, um, someone's doing Corcoran as well. Um, and then, um, you'll also see rocks around the community. There's a county community, uh, rock painting, so you should see those rocks throughout the community. There'll be a rock garden outside the District Attorney's Office, and I think people are already working on painting those rocks already. I believe Wendy Dibble has a whole box of rocks painted by the Juvenile Center. So we'll be placing those out and about, so you'll be seeing those around as well. Um, I want to promote the Lisa Project tours. Uh, I have been giving several tours and, uh, recently did West Hills College Nursing Program. And also Lemoore Naval Air Base, uh, their mental health providers are coming out. We're going to be giving them a tour. So I just want to push that out there that for child abuse awareness, I really would like to see us get, um, some people out into those tours for Lisa Project and get it going again. So, um, I know we have COVID still, but we can do small groups and it's been, we've been able to do it. So, um, last and not least, um, do you have that flyer? Oh, here it is. Um, I just want to, you'll see this around the community. Hopefully you'll see it on your media, social media. Um, we are doing next Tuesday at Quantinia Church in partnership with Quantinia Church. We're doing, uh, California's Forgotten Children. It's a screening on human trafficking. One of the victims that is featured in this film is from Kings County. Um, so we're hoping to get a good turnout. Please, if you see it on your social media, could you please push it out so we can get this awareness out there? And that's all I have.
Good morning, Board. I just, I'd like to say I'm a survivor of child abuse and child sexual abuse. This month is very important to me and always has been. And you see before you, you'll see three agencies today presenting this or requesting this proclamation. And, and that's one of the things that's so unique and special about Kings County. One of the things that we do great is collaboration. Really, the key to prevention of child abuse is collaboration because a lot of scars don't heal, and I can attest to that personally. So thank you, Board, and thank you to all our partner agencies for your cooperation in combating child abuse.
Good morning, Board. Sonia Bugey, Human Services Agency. And what I want to thank is your board for recognizing this, but also CAPC. While our leadership currently is by Wendy and Julia, Wendy from probation and Julia from District Attorney's Office, membership of CAPC, even though we've struggled with the events during the past two years, the work that's been done to prevent child abuse, um, is by our agencies, but also by KPFP and, um, KCAO and various community-based organizations, hospitals, behavioral health. There's a lot of partners that sit on this committee and, um, help us do fun events, but also help us review RFPs, help us do a lot of good work and partnering. So I want to acknowledge that partnership because while they're visible in April, they actually do the work year round.
Good. Thank you. So with that, we would ask the boards to approve this resolution and unless you have any questions of us. Good. Thank you. Keith, uh, questions, comments, concerns, raise your balance.
I'll comment, Mr. Chairman. I'm happy to, uh, uh, second the motion as well. I just want to, um, thank everyone for taking the time here. I think it is important that we pause to, uh, take up, to take up the resolution. I mean, the board, all we're going to do is vote on this, but everyone out there, the employees, the officers who, uh, who deal with this situation and carry the emotional weight here, you guys are the ones who obviously feel this every day and the impacts that you carry on the rest of your lives with you from, um, obviously the child who is traumatized, but working backwards from that, the surrounding family members, the officers who respond to the call and the investigators who have to interview, uh, interview, uh, the children and our employees who, uh, who carry on with this. So it is important to stop. We moved quick up here, um, taking up, uh, uh, multiple items, uh, uh, every Tuesday, but it's critical to stop and just pause and reflect on the work you guys do. I know that you're important in the counties. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
As I'm looking at my team here, one group that I don't recognize that really requires a lot of recognition is child welfare staff. And I appreciate your board acknowledging the social workers, um, last month or last, it was just last week, but our social workers and leadership with Monica Connor, who is our child welfare deputy and Tricia sitting here who is our program, one of our program managers in child welfare. There's a lot of, we're a piece of the system, but we're a really critical piece of the system. So I want to acknowledge the staff that does this work every single day. Did not forget you guys. Thank you.
Good job. Yeah. Thank you for that. Uh, any other questions or comments? The, uh, resolution to proclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month has been moved by Fagunda, seconded by Valley. And if there are no other questions or comments, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Hi.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Uh, let the record show that item stands approved. I'm in favor. So thank you and, uh, good luck and, uh, what time does the screening start on Tuesday? Six, six o'clock. Very good. Thank you. With that, thank you and thank you, staff. Uh, the next item comes from Public Works where they have two items. First item is to approve an agreement with Provost and Pritchard and Mitchell. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of your board. Uh, the first item that, uh, department has, um, before you, uh, Mitchell Cabrera, Chief Engineer with Public Works. The first item is the, uh, agreement, uh, for consultant services for the fire station number four. Um, that has to be relocated due to the high-speed rail. Uh, funding was secured, uh, through that rail authority to provide the partial remodel that we are currently working on with Architects to Design for Fire Station Number Five. The fire station number four would have to be relocated, uh, through the RFP process. Um, county staff along with the fire department, uh, have selected Provost and Pritchard Consulting, Consulting Group as, uh, the best fit to provide these services. They will be providing the site assessment and environmental and land acquisition services, uh, for, uh, the relocation of this fire station. Uh, the consultant services agreement presented before your board was negotiated not to exceed $83,000, which would come out of those funds secured through the High-Speed Rail Authority. So the request before your board is to approve the consultant services agreement, uh, for the land acquisition and site assessment and authorize the public works director to sign, uh, the agreement as well as approve any, um, change, contract change orders, uh, not to exceed 10% of the agreement. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer it.
Thank you, Mitchell. No change orders.
They're amendments now.
Oh, yeah, exactly. You just changed the word. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Are there any questions or comments, uh, on this, uh, item?
Is there no question, comments, or move for approval?
Second.
Moved by Fagunda, seconded by Verboon. Is there additional discussions? Hearing or seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Hi.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Let the record show that item stands approved. I'm in favor. Mitchell, would you like to continue with the Provost and Pritchard regarding the Kettleman City Active Transportation Program cycle?
Yeah, yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the second item is a, uh, amendment, uh, to the contract already in place. In November of, uh, 26th of 2019, your board approved the consultant services agreement with Provost and Pritchard, uh, to provide the design for an asphalt concrete pathway along, uh, State Route 41 in Kettleman City. Um, through the request of Caltrans, um, additional changes were required to be made to the plan specifications of this project. Um, the plans were bid ready. Uh, we had to make these changes, but in order to have the consultant, uh, make these changes, we need to amend the contract. Uh, the total amendment is, uh, estimated at 12,500 negotiated with the, uh, consultant. So the project total would be 64,913. Uh, this would allow the, um, the six-foot AC pathway to be constructed along South State Route 41 along with a rectangular rapid flashing beacon at the current, uh, crosswalk on a general patrolling avenue. Uh, so if you have any questions, we'd be willing, uh, to answer those at this time.
Very good. Thank you. Questions or comments regarding this?
Questions, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, um, for, for the record, this is, uh, Caltrans is now officially directing the county to change the flows, um, of the drainage system to stop everything moving towards Highway 41.
So part of their original comments had to do with the proximity that the AC pathway is to State Route 41. They, they had, uh, concerns with the drainage coming off of State Route 41 and now being, now with this AC pathway, their concern was that the water would puddle close to State Route 41. Uh, their request originally was to have our consultant study the whole watershed for Kettleman, uh, from the residential all the way down to the commercial. Uh, we had a couple of meetings with the consultant and Caltrans to limit that to only the project areas. And, um, that's the plan to just study the flows and the areas we're going to be affecting with that AC path, um, to try to show Caltrans that the project isn't going to have a negative effect.
Okay, thank you. And, um, cause I know, uh, we've been doing a lot of work trying to find some land for an actual water basin, correct? And we still don't have a, a water basin. Uh, so with, with that, are you, where, where are you designing this to, for the water to go? Is it just, are you saying, hey, we're just going to show them, uh, multiple options of the water is now going to flow to the north or to the west versus, um, uh, flowing east to Highway 41? Cause if we don't have a water basin, we don't have a clear path, right?
Yeah. So the original intent of the whole application for this project was to do sidewalk in this area, but given the the need for the drainage basin and Caltrans not wanting to take any additional drainage, uh, we had to settle for the AC path. Um, so what this study will do, um, the drainage study will show that the rain flow now versus after, you know, once the AC pathway is in place, um, it'll still drain to the local areas where it's draining to now, and it won't cause additional, um, drainage, uh, negative or adverse effects to Caltrans and State Road.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dominic, looks like he's itching to get the mic too, but, but, uh, sir Dominic, um, while you're coming up too, because I know I'm going to get questions on this later. Could you just, um, uh, for, for the public, just talk about this flashing light? Meaning that, uh, most likely this is going to be a temporary, uh, a light if, if in fact the county moves forward and a pedestrian bridge comes to reality that I don't want people to think that this flashing light that was already in the plan uh, when, when we, uh, worked through this, uh, a few years ago, that that's where the end of the day solution to the Highway 41, um, kids crossing.
Dominic Tiberzki, Public Works. And for the record, I was just offering support. I think Mitchell was doing a great job, but, uh, first I'd like to address your initial question. So Caltrans has stated that no additional development could occur without us containing the water in a basin. This is sort of a separate issue because this construction is within the Caltrans right-of-way. Uh, it was a project that they sponsored from the beginning. Then when we went to get the approach and a permit, uh, they were concerned about the asphalt concrete, uh, restricting the infiltration of the water into the ground. So changing the drainage pattern. It's minimal, but nonetheless, we had to address their concern regarding the crossing. Uh, as you know, it is an existing, uh, crosswalk. We're going to add the rectangular rapid flashing beacons that are pedestrian activated along with pre-warning beacons, 250 feet uh, upstream in both directions. As you mentioned, this project was, uh, in place and, and being, uh, developed prior to the, uh, potential bridge project. And so once, once the bridge is constructed, uh, this crossing would go away. Uh, you know, this, this is a, an at-grade crossing. The, the lights will certainly improve the, the safety. Um, but, you know, the intent is for this to, uh, go away once, once a bridge is constructed.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. And, Mr. Chair, lastly, I don't know if I reported when we had that, uh, conference, that Zoom with Caltrans a couple of weeks ago. Uh, you know, there's been rumors that they were going to add another lane to the north and to the south and with a total of four lanes to be crossed there. Uh, but according to Caltrans officials on the Zoom call that that's not what's going to happen. They're going to just keep that one lane north and one lane south there on Highway 41, which I like that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Very good. Thank you. Um, additional questions or comments? This is the next item, uh, Chair. Moved by Fagunda, seconded, uh, by Verboon. Thank you very much. Or was it the other way around? Okay. Fagundes was faster. Verboon was longer. Yeah, yeah, yeah. With that, uh, additional questions, comments, or concerns?
I grew up going to Kettleman City every time it rained.
Just to ride motorcycles though.
My dad said if it rained in Kettleman City, there'd be trees.
Exactly. Never rained in Kettleman City. And when it does, it all runs off.
Yep.
Comes fast. With that, if there are no other discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboon. Craig Peterson. Richard Fagundes.
Let the record show, uh, five in favor. So thank you very much. Good luck. Um, and just have them look at, you know, cement versus asphalt, because I think sometimes water and asphalt and even though all of that runoff is going to be coming from a state highway, you know, sometimes going concrete might be, I don't know, price-wise. Dominic, have you priced it out, a, a concrete pathway versus AC?
So, uh, concrete is a little more expensive, but it, it has its advantages. Certainly, that was our initial proposal.
Correct. That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, Caltrans said they would not allow, uh, any concrete in the right-of-way, that it would have to be asphalt concrete.
Okay. Yeah, because I, yeah, it, and, and I see concrete does some weird things. I need, even noticed, and I don't know if that's the city of Hanford or Caltrans, the overcrossing over here at, uh, 12th. Uh, the median in between that the concrete is buckled up and has a, has a, you know, TP right there in the middle.
Correct. Yeah.
And.
That does occur at times.
Yeah, yeah, but, uh, asphalt, you have to seal every once in a while and you have to crack seal and, and, and keep it maintained as well. So I think both of them have So I think both of them have pretty equal. If Caltrans improvement standards are just for AC, that's what we're stuck with then.
Well, they, they do have asphalt con, I'm sorry, they do have concrete improvement standards for this particular project. They said they would not allow that.
And, Ms. Chairman, it's been a while, but I think the asphalt too was, because this is going to be a walkway to promote walking, right? And that asphalt's going to give more on the, on the legs, right? When people walking through that exercise versus walking on hard concrete.
That's about the same. It's just, AC, you have to just seal every once in a while and it'll crack, and concrete will do the same thing, especially in that mountainous region. So I, I can see there, see it both ways.
Get a squeegee machine, and I'll drive over there and I'll squeeze the water off every once in a while.
There you go. Zamboni for cement. It's easier. Yeah, it's, it's.
Crack and go back in any patch, no problem.
Yeah. Correct. Very good. Thank you. That concludes all of the business items on the agenda for this morning. We'll now move to a study session in which we'll receive information on AB four-eight-one regarding military equipment use policy. And Sheriff Dave Robinson, good morning, sir. Thank you for being here.
Chairman, members of the board, the district attorney and I actually have a joint agenda item this morning. AB four-eight-one is an assembly bill that was passed that requires a law enforcement agency to provide a list, a use policy, county ordinance. And so today, we're here before your governing body to provide that information. Historically, you've already seen these pieces of equipment because we've come through county administration and through the budget process to make the purchases of these pieces of equipment, such as the armored vehicle that we have, you know, as an example, drones, things like that all fall under this. Special thanks to County Council and Jennifer, I don't know if she's there yet, there she is. She helped us put the ordinance together that has to come back before your board pursuant to the new law. So the governing body must consider a proposed military equipment use policy in open session. That's why we're here today. And it's required that we get this permission prior to May first of twenty-twenty-two. And then AB forty-one also requires the law enforcement agency that receives the approval to submit annual reports to the governing body regarding the use of the equipment and any complaints received, any internal audits or other information about violations of military use policy, the cost of such use, and other similar information. In your agenda packet, you'll see the Kings County Sheriff's Office Military Equipment List as defined by the legislature. Some of it is not military equipment, quite frankly. That's just what they included in the, in the language. I believe the district attorney's office will be putting their list together probably for the next agenda.
Yes, we will. It's, it's far less inclusive of all the equipment we have because we do not define things to the degree that the legislature has for the sheriff's office, but it is a similar list. It's not as in-depth.
And then Commander Chris Bees here. If you have any questions about the actual equipment that we use, such as the drones or the armored vehicle, things like that, you know, he'll be happy to answer those questions. But I think most of them you probably recognize as piece of equipment that we've come before your body before. Some of them are included in just the annual budget process, like for the Special Weapons and Tactics Team, you know, the, the chemical agent launchers and things like that that we use, like when we go and help out in LA or Oakland for riot control, things like that, the piece of equipment that we take there. And so it really just highlights the things that we do for Kings County and the equipment that we do have. We used to try to not advertise all those things because we didn't want to share that information with the people that we're trying to use them against. However, the law has taken that option away, and so now we're just going to advertise everything we have and do the best we can with what the new requirements are. There's also a caveat that does include, includes all peace officers. So you also have peace officers that work for Human Services Agency. I spoke with Mayor Cruz-Clement. She didn't believe they had any equipment that met any of the criteria. And then also Chief Sundega, I don't know if she left already, but we briefly spoke, and she didn't believe that they had any correct, uh, equipment that met that criteria either. So it's just the district attorney and I that appear to have met the criteria to come before your body today. And so the next step would be to come back for the reading of the ordinance, and I know you all very familiar with that process. And if you have any questions or any direction that you would like to provide either of us based on the equipment that we do have, we're here for that and as outlined in the agenda. So take any questions or comments you have. Yeah, we have a lot of cool stuff. If you look at the list, it's, it's kind of neat to see, but, yeah, so.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes.
So when you say military equipment, it's not anything that you check out from NAS LAMOR, it's just equipment that you have, but the state legislature labels it military equipment?
Yeah, partly. There is a ten, what we call a ten thirty-three program where there's a military surplus where you can receive certain pieces of equipment once the military has surplus that equipment. And so like, if you remember recently, we had an airplane that we received through that program. We had purchased one airplane, but then another airplane we actually received free of charge through that program. And so we do have those pieces of equipment that we can receive from time to time. Over the course of time, we received some mini fourteen rifles from them and things like that. And so since then, we've transitioned most of that stuff out. But annually, we also report in a public notification to that program, the inventory of that equipment as well. And so it's just interesting when you actually read the language of four-eight-one, that they've really broadened the definition of military equipment, so.
Let's tell you, that airplane's badass, too. The missiles that strap to the.
Right. I think sometimes they, they watch too many movies in Sacramento and they think like all this, you know, at one point, they talked about like bayonets, you know, that we shouldn't receive bayonets from the military. Well, yeah, what are we going to do with the bayonet other than, you know, it's really cool looking, but, yeah.
Could block the shot.
Right.
Can you tell Sue Peterson to stop buzzing our houses, too?
With airplane? The newer airplane flies higher, but we still do get some people asking about it and, and, yeah, it's very interesting.
Nice.
I don't know if the district attorney has additional information.
Assistant Chief Darren Kramer is here. He and Chief Charlie Flores worked on, on this as well with Ms. Shifert. And, but he is here if you have any questions specifically as to our equipment in the DA's office. It is much more limited than the sheriff's list. We don't get all the, all the fun toys, but.
Yeah, it comes with a lot of liability as well.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
Yeah. And so it'll come back before you at any point, obviously during, you know, the reading of the ordinance, et cetera. If you have any questions about any of the stuff you see in the list, I know that some of you probably just saw the list this morning, but at any point, if you have any questions or comments.
Can you bring some so we can inspect, bring all your rifles?
Not as cool as the fire department, just bring it all in front of you and before the table, right? Yeah.
No, go to his place.
Go to his place. Go.
Absolutely. Anytime you'd like to see any of it or come out and train with the SWAT team, you're more than welcome. We always need role players at SWAT practice, so.
You know, Marine Corps, M sixteen A two service rifle, that was our weapon.
Best tool yet, the dog.
Well, some of this stuff isn't as cool as the stuff that you saw in the Marine Corps, I guarantee.
All right, all right. Because you know I'm an expert with the M sixteen A two. We hit bullseyes from a, a ten thousand meters away. We'll hit them.
Yeah.
That's it. I can come do some.
Now, you said we.
Marine Corps, Marines, that's what we do.
What about you?
I, I am. I was five out of six years, uh, uh, expert on that with my rifle.
Might have to come out and show off some of your skills.
Let's come, come on, it's free training.
Yeah. Thank you.
Make sure you're judging. Make sure you do a critique. Yeah. And make sure he brings pizza. Yeah, good.
So County Council's the expert here, but I don't believe we need any action today. It was just a study session to open up any questions, comments, or direction with your board.
That's exactly right. It's just a study session to make sure you're aware of the issue and that we will be bringing back an ordinance. The process for the board approval must commence by May one. The actual ordinance does not need to be adopted by May one, but with, when, within one-hundred-and-eighty days of commencement of that approval process. So we have that timeframe to work with and to receive feedback. I know that our office with the sheriff's office, one of us will be posting, make sure that, that ordinance is posted on the internet thirty days, the one that we're actually going to adopt. The one submitted is, my understanding, is, is very close to the final one to be adopted, but it's still a draft. So when it comes before you, make sure, you know, you read the, the, the final one that is submitted. And with that, I have no further comments. I will say, Jennifer, if there's anything that I've missed, then you can go ahead and fill in any gaps. That's right.
I believe the policy is already posted, correct? I think we posted last week.
Good. Thank you.
Well, here's my comment. Let's, let's wait one-hundred-and-seventy-nine and nine-tenths days to send it, and then let's send it in a jar of honey to the. I mean, it's just sickening. You know, here we are, here we go again, people breaking into shops all over the state, and what are we going to do? We're going to, we're going to, we're going to further degrade the response of public safety, and it's just sickening.
It's, you know, just to, to kind of provide a little additional feedback, there's some jurisdictions in this state where there's some, you know, really heavy discussions between the board and the sheriff, the district attorneys, et cetera. You know, we're pretty thankful for what we have here in Kings County because it's some of those jurisdictions that, that really drove this legislation because they want more oversight in those jurisdictions to take away, you know, some of the things that the district attorney and I do independently and individually. And so it's really, it comes down to some of those jurisdictions where the board of supervisors working with state legislature has just dictated that they're going to do more and more of this going forward. So we're fortunate here in Kings County.
Supervisor Verboon, do you have a question or comment?
Yeah, I just, I don't think it's right that we let her. And I know when you take a CCW, they teach you, you know, you don't advertise you have a gun on you. Keep to yourself. And I think that the military and the police and the sheriff and everybody should have that same option. No one needs to know what we have. Use it, we're trained to use it, it's not needed. I don't know how far we can push this. I, I think it's, like Sue Peterson said, it's disgraceful against our public safety that everybody has to know what they have, and we don't know what the public has. We don't know what the bad guys have. They have what they stole. Now, people that follow the rules have their rights eliminated because they're following rules. I just think it's a bunch of bullshit.
Yeah, thank you.
How do you really feel? Additional questions or comments? Again, thank you for sharing the information. Thank you for sharing the list, and good luck, and we look forward to you when you come back in the future.
Thank you.
And thank.
If anybody has any further questions, I'm available. Y'all have my cell phone.
Yeah, and appreciate, appreciate all of the hard work and dedication, and we'll continue to move forward. Thank you very much. That concludes the business of today. We'll now move to board member announcements or reports on their own initiative. Board members may make brief remarks on their own activities. Supervisor Fagundes.
Last weekend, I drove to parts, Hickey and Hurst, and it's good to see people out, getting out and getting with their families, you know, playing ball and barbecuing. And then also I attended a couple of fundraisers. If I keep this up, I'll weigh over two-hundred pounds by this.
You could use a little bit of weight, so that's probably nothing wrong with that.
I'm at one-hundred-and-ninety-nine now.
One-ninety-nine.
No, it's, it's good to see people out and vegan and working. They're more at ease now that things are relaxed. Thank you for that.
Yeah, no, keep eating, because if not, you're going to be picking up these rocks and putting them in your pockets when the wind doesn't blow you into Kern County, so.
No, I got an anchor I carry.
You got an anchor? Okay, good. Well, good. I'm glad.
Thank you.
You talking about your wife?
Yeah. I don't, I don't need any wind for her to home again. Yes, dear.
Moving right along. Supervisor Valley.
Yeah. Let's throw back the last ten seconds so YouTube can delete that part.
Strike that.
We got a buffer, a buffer button.
Where your microphone is, we're not able to pick you up as well as people speaking from the back of the room.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Oh, man, thank you, Ms. Chair. Thursday at noon, we have the State Treasurer of California coming to City of Corcoran. We're going to hold a small business roundtable there at Lake Bottom from, from noon to one-thirty. You got some good reps there at the table to come meet the treasurer, and we appreciate our taking the time to come to Kings County and the City of Corcoran. Also, I wanted to just touch base again. I don't, I don't know where the, the comments are starting to come from regarding our Kings County Elections Department, but every time they come, I'm going to say that our Elections Department has one-hundred percent confidence of us, the, we appreciate the integrity of that department led by Ms. Sleepy Villa and, and the staff. Their service is honorable and appreciate that. And I, I don't want to see anything get sideways in the rumor mill here in Kings County because those people work too hard to have anything like that to start trying to brew or manifest here around the county. And then I did want to also just touch back to the, to the, to the lady who also made an unscheduled appearance in regards to, you know, our abilities to communicate back, but just know that before any, nine times out of ten, before something hits these microphones here, you know, the community liaisons are the five of us right here, and these things go off constantly at all hours of the day. I'm sure my colleagues could tell you that. And, and we're, we're accessible. This is a small county, and, and people have our show numbers and they see us. And again, we get that air full. Appreciate it coming here to be on the record, but just know those, those conversations take place. People don't just come and get ignored and, and leave. But I just want to respond to you a little bit about that, and I hope, I hope that helps a little bit with some of the concerns that you have. All right? Thank you. I'm done with my time, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'll, I'll actually respond to that. The county continues to be in discussions with SEIU over those contracts. So those discussions are going on. And, and I echo to respond to your concerns that we are subject to the Brown Act here with our meetings, and so that is part of the limits that, that prescribe our ability to act on and discuss fully matters that are brought forth in closed, I mean, in, in public comment. However, as Supervisor Valley said, that all members of the county are available, including the board, to receive comments outside and to have discussions outside of these formal board meetings.
Supervisor Verboon.
I have nothing to comment on. Thank you very much.
Nothing? How's the corner?
Growing.
Is it growing? The wind hasn't blown now? Still there?
It's good.
Trees are good?
Been all about two hours up there Saturday, walking all the roads, trimming all the suckers off and chopping leaves, so. That's good.
And everything's good? How many steps you get?
I don't have a.
Oh, you don't have anything? You're going to have to work on that.
No, I'm good.
Okay. Supervisor Peterson.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I think we're all aware that, uh, last week there was a large infrastructure project in the, uh, courts. And, uh, I just wanted to read, uh, an excerpt from, uh, um, Judge Valeri Krasakis on her opinion. And, um, um, counsel, if it's okay with you, I'll quote that. So when viewed together, Sandridge's, uh, past practices combined with the size and direction of the pipeline project, as evidenced in materials before the court, there is little doubt that the pipeline project could ultimately be used by Sandridge, in part to transport some amount of groundwater resources outside Kings, the county of Kings. At this time, however, those with the duty to make laws and/or pass county ordinances limiting ability of landowners to transport groundwater outside county boundaries have declined to act. Accordingly, despite any personal distaste for the transportation of limited water resources outside of the county of Kings, which this county may hold, there appears to be no legal grounds upon which it may base an order halting Sandridge's private construction or use of the pipeline project in its current form. So I just, uh, remind the board that that's our authority. And, uh, it's my belief that we are behind and we need to, uh, move this forward quickly. And I'll also say that, um, you know, it's not just, uh, in courts that's occurring. Um, if you look at the District One election, um, there's going to be influences in that election based on, uh, this issue, as well as, you know, attorneys trying to silence our ability to speak. And, uh, I just throw those out there as information that, um, all lend itself to the fact this issue needs to be dealt with. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Good, thank you. Um, for me, uh, first five had their meeting. Uh, we, we know Sonia is going to be leaving. Uh, we certainly want to wish her well on her new assignment and I'm sure we'll have, uh, additional opportunities to do that. Uh, in the meantime, Dr. Lewis has stepped up and we've been, uh, chair-elect. I think that's the way I remembered it. So thank you, uh, Dr. Lewis, for stepping up and taking on that responsibility. The proposed budget, as well as the administrative cost limits, uh, were also discussed and approved. And, uh, we also had the opportunity to review the California First Five Annual Report and that was also, uh, moved forward, so. Uh, I continue to work, uh, with Lemoore High School, announcing a couple of softball games and that season continues to move through. Uh, had the pleasure and honor of, uh, being one of the judges for the Regional Lemoore Lions, uh, speech contest. Uh, some very good speeches, uh, at the regional level, so they have, uh, they're about halfway through their journey of completing that, uh, process. Uh, I want to thank Supervisor Fagundes that came in and kind of calmed my wife down a little bit. Knights of Columbus had a fish fry on Friday and, uh, preparing three hundred pounds of fish can be kind of stressful. Um, and so, uh, but I think everything, uh, worked out well and, and, um, just want to thank, uh, the Knights of Columbus and everyone that helped out with that, uh, event. And then on Saturday, uh, in a wind-blown situation, uh, we fried up a hundred hotdogs for the Stratford Easter egg hunt, uh, thanks to the Kings Lion Club that time, uh, for returning that event the first time in a couple of years with COVID protocols. And it was nice to get everybody back, but it was a very cool and blustery morning in Stratford. But, uh, we all, uh, had, uh, hot dogs and some of them were even Cajun-style. So, yeah, we had some Cajun-style hot dogs just to add to the flavors, so.
What kind of, what kind of fish did you guys do?
Uh, that was Asian catfish. So, yeah, uh, um, a little bit different, freshwater, um, a little, a little bit different flavored, a little bit different texture.
It was frying?
Uh, deep-fried. Yeah. So, uh, nice big fillets, six-ounce fillets, uh, so nice, nice, uh, nice event. With that, uh, Mr. Hill, do you have a report on board correspondence, upcoming events, and, uh, future agenda items?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, for board correspondence, your board received a letter from the California State Treasurers regarding the Investment in Mental Health Wellness Grant Program for Children and Youth County of Kings awarded to Behavioral Health Department. For upcoming events, uh, your board received an invitation from Matt Samfilippo, Training Chief for the Kings County Fire Department, to the board regarding a graduation badge pending ceremony on April twelfth, two thousand twenty-two at three P M located at Station Two. Uh, we will be holding, uh, the county will be holding a groundbreaking ceremony for the old hospital tomorrow, April thirteenth at eleven A M at one-twenty-two, two Lacy Boulevard in Hanford. The City of Hanford will be hosting an egg hunt at Hanford Civic Park on April fifteenth from, oh, ten A M to, excuse me, eleven-thirty A M. They have three different age groups and times. Submission for advanced purchases, three dollars per child, five dollars per child the day of the event. Registration began on March first. Lemoore will be holding an Easter egg celebration on Saturday, April sixteenth from eleven A M to two P M with live music and free hotdogs at the Veterans Hall from, excuse me, from Lemoore Lions Club. Participating downtown businesses will be handing out eggs for the kids. Children must bring their own Easter bags, baskets. As presented today, there will be a film screening on the California's Forgotten Children hosted by the Kings County District Attorney's Office. Uh, victim witness on April nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two at six P M at Quinoneo Church located at one-two-five-three-six Hanford Armona Road in Hanford. There's also another food truck takeover on April nineteenth from eleven to two at Court